Is nine thirty-one, so we are going to get started. Alright, so first of all, can we do the roll call? Commissioner Mulca.
Present.
Commissioner Henson.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Odereseal. Alright, and can we have everyone stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Have the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Thank you. Alright, so we're gonna jump right into our awards and presentations. Thank you all for being here today. As we begin, I'd like to shine a spotlight on National Immigrant Heritage Month. Adams County is proudly a majority-minority community, and our strength comes from the rich, diverse backgrounds of our families who call this place home. Immigrants bring innovation, courage, and a deep cultural tradition, contributing to our schools, businesses, and neighborhoods in countless ways. This month, we celebrate their stories and recognize the ways that they enrich our shared community. Let's honor the journeys, sacrifices, and achievements of our immigrant friends and families, family members, and neighbors, and we commit to this month and every month in building a welcoming Adams County for all. Now, I'm going to take it over to Commissioner Odereseal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a proclamation entitled National Immigrant Heritage Month of June two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the United States of America is a nation built by immigrants, individuals and families who came seeking freedom, opportunity, and a better future, and whose journeys have shaped our national identity. And whereas National Immigrant Heritage Month, first established in two thousand fourteen, is an opportunity to celebrate the rich history and contribution of immigrants, honor the shared stories of immigration that define us, and reaffirm our commitment to welcoming people from all backgrounds. And whereas Annie Moore, the first immigrant processed at Ellis Island in eighteen ninety-two, to modern-day leaders, artists, and innovators, immigrants have contributed to every aspect of American life. And whereas notable immigrants in U.S. history include Albert Einstein, whose groundbreaking scientific work transformed our understanding of the universe. Joseph Pulitzer, a Hungarian immigrant who revolutionized journalism and established the Pulitzer Prize. Madeleine Albright, the first woman to serve as U.S. Secretary of State, who arrived in the United States as a child refugee and spent part of her youth in Colorado. And whereas Colorado has a long history and home to immigrants, communities that have enriched the state's culture, workforce, and history, from early miners and railroad workers to today's educators, health professionals, entrepreneurs, and public servants. And whereas during National Immigrant Heritage Month, we honor the legacy of those who came before us and the contributions of today's immigrants, whose resilience, innovation, and community spirit continue to strengthen our nation and our county. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners in the County of Adams and the State of Colorado proclaims June two thousand twenty-five as National Immigrant Heritage Month and encourages all residents to honor the rich diversity of immigrants and celebrate the many ways they contribute to our community. Signed by every one of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm gonna open it up to my fellow commissioners. Anyone would like to?
Let me, let me, since I just finished, I would like to say that this is extremely important. And a lot of this facts and the statements made in this proclamation, I think, really tell a lot of what is so important about our country being based on. It's a country of immigrants. And I could tell you, there's probably very few folks in here who wouldn't be here if it weren't for some immigrants somewhere in the line, okay? And there may be somebody who can say, raise their hand and say, nope, my family's been here the whole time. I don't know anybody who says that there hasn't been some sort of impact based on immigration. We have an outstanding country, and we don't always get it right. And there are times that depending on who's the leader in any particular seat, you're gonna either be happy or unhappy, but the resiliency of this country is based on the resiliency that comes from that heritage of immigrants. Whoever their journey was to get here, we're all working now on a journey to get further together. And I know we can do it. And I'm really proud to have this proclamation, particularly in this time. And I'm proud to have a Board of County Commissioners that support us standing up and saying we support the human beings that have helped create this country, this county, and all the way down to our individual neighborhoods. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Odereseal. I'll send it over to Commissioner Pinter.
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate this proclamation, and it comes up every year. And to my colleague's point, we all come from diverse backgrounds. I think it's particularly poignant here in Adams County to recognize the power of immigrants in our community. Raising families, building businesses, the statistics on small business ownership for our immigrant families are through the roof, and they tend to sign up for military service at higher rates as well. And I know that that was true in my own family. My father's mother, she and her family, when she was a teenager, applied right before World War Two to come to the United States, where it denied immigration. And as a result, she was the only member of her family to survive World War Two. And then after the war, she did get married and tried to start a family in her home country, which was Hungary. And during that time, there was great global conflict, as there is today. And in starting her family, she and her husband had my father. He was a small child, and then his baby sister passed away, and she and her husband said enough is enough. They closed the door of their house. They each walked out with one backpack, because it was unsafe to tell anyone they were leaving. And they walked out, and they walked, and they walked, and they went through four different refugee camps before finally getting a letter through Catholic Charities to be able to come here. And it was more than a good life, which is what we all say when immigrants seek residency in the United States. It was access to civil rights. It was access to civil liberties. It was access to a just society. It was access to everything that we talked about in our Pledge of Allegiance. And I know that that is all under threat today. And I know that my father, during his time here, volunteered for service. Not for easy college credits, but volunteered for service in the Vietnam War and put his life on the line for this nation and for our freedoms. And I know a lot of people come from immigrant and veterans' families and people who sign up for service. And these proclamations, they are a symbol of the American dream that we all hold dear. It feels to be very much under threat in this current environment, and I am grateful for this board standing up for at a time when saying the word that we have a diverse community feels risky, but it is a true reflection of who lives here and how we've come to be in this great nation. And we can always do better, because it's always seeking and striving the same way. People walked out of their homes and closed their door and walked here with a hope and a dream of building a society that was better, more just, and more equal. And I know that I still believe that, and many of us do too, and the effort is worth it.
Thank you, Commissioner Pinter.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. I thank my colleagues for their meaningful comments. I would just like to add my own support and appreciation for this proclamation today. And we are predominantly a nation of immigrants, and immigrants have always been essential to our country's success in a myriad of ways, and that continues to be true today. And it has been a great privilege for me as a council member, as a civic leader, to attend various ribbon cuttings and student acknowledgement ceremonies, where families of immigrants come here seeking a better life, to start a business, to achieve, attain education or certification, opportunity to work in a career that is meaningful to them to make a better life for themselves. They inspire me, and I am inspired to continue to be an advocate and a voice for welcoming all of those people into our community, because another privilege that I have had as a civic leader is to hear speeches by demographers and economic forecasters. And the reality is that without immigrants in our country, we are not going to succeed. That has been true and continues to be true, and I'm committed to that message. I'm committed to standing up for all people who seek a home and a better life here in America to enjoy all the rights and privileges that come with being a resident of the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Henson. I'm gonna wrap up comments here with a brief statement. I appreciate the comments that my fellow commissioners have already stated. You know, what I love most about hearing about National Immigrant Heritage Month is hearing everybody's story. Everybody has a story, right, of how their family came here, of the trials and tribulations that took place, you know, seeking opportunity. And, you know, I think that that's actually one of the best things to hear about is everybody's unique story. How does that all come together? We have stories that are more recent. We have stories that are hundreds of years old, and we all carry those with us. So, if anything, maybe this month, we also share our stories with each other and also just kind of recognize where we all have come from other places. Our diversity has created the beautiful community that we have today, and that's the community we all love. So, let's celebrate that this month, and thank you guys again for your comments. I appreciate it. We're gonna move on to our next proclamation. Oh, do we have anyone speaking on this? No, we don't. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Our next proclamation for the day recognizes Elder Abuse Awareness Day. This moment reminds us to honor the dignity, respect, and safety of our older community members. I'm deeply grateful for the dedication of our Adult Protection Services Team and Human Services. Their tireless work and their compassion ensures that vulnerable seniors are heard, cared for, and protected. Today's proclamation reaffirms our shared pledge to stand up against elder abuse in all its forms. Together, we, together with courage, vigilance, and kindness, we will continue to build a community where every elder feels valued, supported, and safe. So, I am going to hand this over to Commissioner Henson to read the proclamation.
Thank you. I would like to read a proclamation for World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the Adams County Board of Commissioners prides itself on giving back to the community, contributing to the quality of life of all of our citizens. And whereas World Elder Abuse Awareness Day draws attention to the millions of older adults in the world who experience elder abuse, neglect, and financial exploitation. And whereas, as many as one in ten older Americans are abused or neglected each year, and only one in fourteen cases of elder abuse come to the authorities' attention. And whereas Adams County Adult Protection Professionals are important assets to the county, working in collaboration with community partners to investigate allegations of abuse, neglect, and exploitation. And whereas, through community efforts, Adams County residents are encouraged to join together by wearing the color purple to raise awareness on this day and throughout the year for our vulnerable adults who have been abused, neglected, or exploited. And whereas, through this effort, Adams County citizens will help to ensure that abused and neglected older adults have the opportunity to be treated with respect and free from harm as they are an integral part of this community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day and urges all citizens to join the local, statewide, national, and world efforts to raise awareness and to prevent elder abuse. And it is signed by the full Board of the County Commissioners.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioner Henson. Now, I'd like to invite Carol Johnson, our Aging and Adult Administrator, up to the podium to speak, please. Yes, bring the team. Thank you.
I'm encouraging them to come up here. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for acknowledging June fifteenth as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Today, I have with me the Adams County Adult Protective Services Team, made up of two supervisors, nine caseworkers, and two case aides. And they are responsible for ensuring protective services for our elders, as well as other at-risk adults for Adams County. World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, or WEAD, was established in two thousand and six to acknowledge significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. The day is dedicated to raising awareness about the abuse, neglect, and exploitation that many older adults face. By shining a spotlight on elder abuse, WEAD encourages the community to take action and address one of the least investigated types of violence. Elder abuse is often a hidden problem that affects millions globally and often goes unreported due to fear, shame, or lack of awareness. By spreading awareness, we can help ensure that every older adult lives with dignity, respect, and safety. By two thousand thirty, it's anticipated globally that individuals sixty and older will outnumber youth, which is why it's so important that greater attention is paid to the specific challenges affecting older persons. By becoming familiar with the signs of abuse, whether it's unexplained bruises, changes in both physical appearance and behavior, or changes in financial situations, it's always best to report any suspicions. The Adams County Protective Services Team has received approximately eighteen hundred referrals in two thousand twenty-four, and the number already is trending upwards in two thousand twenty-five. We anticipate the number will increase with the escalating needs of the aging population, leading to potential abuse neglect, and unfortunately, know that not all suspicions are reported. Our small but dedicated team is committed to ensuring the safety of our elders and other at-risk adults. The team consistently demonstrates their integrity and care, as demonstrated by the high standards that are tracked through state timeliness measures and yearly audits. More importantly, the passion this team has for a population that is often forgotten is seen on a daily basis, as they make themselves available if someone wants to speak in person, in the office, or throughout the county. Adams County is fortunate to have such an amazing team. Thank you again for your support of World Elder Abuse Awareness Day for our older adults in Adams County and our amazing Adult Protective Services Team. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Carol. I'd like to open it up to my fellow commissioners for comment. If anyone has any comment. Okay, Kathy?
Thank you, Carol and team for being here, and thank you for the critical work that you do on behalf of our elders in Adams County. Another, you shared a lot of numbers. Another privilege I've had in hearing, again, demographers and other forecasters speak is that Colorado particularly is going to be impacted by a significantly growing percentage of aging residents here. And so, we know our need here in Colorado is particularly acute. The first board I served on at Civic Board was the Thornton Act of Adult Board, and the Adams County Aging Network meets in Ward One of Thornton, so I've been going to their meetings for the better part of two years. Ironically, since I got up here, I've had conflicts every month, but I'm gonna be there next week. That's my goal. And also, recently, I joined the Area Council on Aging at the Denver Regional Council of Governments. This is a huge issue for our community. I know my mother and friends of my, parents of my friends have been targeted by financial, you know, financial schemes and exploitation. It's everywhere, and those were mild cases that we were able to, because, you know, of family connection, we were able to mitigate. But we know many people don't have the same connections and protections. And I've also seen throughout my years of work, even in the arts, choreographing for an intergenerational community theater group, things like that, you just see the impact, the need of that connection in our society, and when those... the necess- the need of that connection in our, in our society. And when those connections uh are broken or weakened, that is where your work is so immensely important to help catch folks who are falling through the cracks and making sure that they have a safe, stable living situation and that they're well cared for. So I'm deeply grateful for all your work and I'm glad that we could acknowledge this day today. Thank you.
All right. Steve?
I wanna thank you all for your work. Uh, we're all gonna become elders if we're lucky. And uh, I think it's important to know that this is one of those very universal services that uh is important to so many folks, but also uh as we try to protect the most vulnerable folks in our community, these are all the also the folks who protected us when we were young. And so we have a duty to really step up and help and wanna thank all of you.
Yes, thank you Carol and team for all the work that you do. I'm gonna invite you to take a picture with us. We're gonna come down and, and take a photo with you guys. And then afterwards, we're gonna take a photo for the National Immigrant Heritage Month proclamation and anybody in the room who would like to join us, please do so. All right, head down. All right. Now we're gonna move to public comments. Erica, has anyone signed up to speak today?
We do not have anyone signed up today.
Okay. Thank you. And do we have any elected officials communication from this group? Anyone? All right, Commissioner Henson?
Hi, good morning everyone. I will be brief. I just want to say thank you so much to staff and everybody who participated in our Adams County Pride Celebration back on June the fourteenth at Riverdale Regional Park. It was a beautiful, fun-filled day, lots of joy. Uh, thank you so much for everyone who attended and participated in making that event successful. I had, I had a wonderful afternoon and uh it was, it was just a great day. And, and I'm so proud of our county for hosting such a wonderful event year after year. Also belated Father's Day wishes, well wishes to everyone who is a father, father figure, brother, uncle, mentor, teacher, neighbor, anybody who's impacting the lives of young people in your community. Thank you so much for all you do to strengthen the community. If you're working to help make a child's life better or guide a young person into adulthood, we are deeply appreciative of your commitment to them. And I would just say too, I think we all know there's a uh, talking about global unrest or uncertainty in the world. That's there, but you know, what we do on a lot of Tuesday mornings before we come down here is we have a collaborative meeting with our executive leadership team. And I can tell you that here in Adams County, we're definitely focused on everything that we can do for the residents here in Adams County and our team is working very hard all the time to make sure we're delivering the best services and uh quality of life and commitment. I get really inspired by the work our, our staff does. And I just want you to know that that work is going on and we are undeterred in our commitment to our community. And you can reach out to us anytime with questions or concerns about that because we are here to work for you. Thank you.
Commissioner Pinter? Thank you. Um, I wanna echo a lot of the things that acknowledgement. Um, Pride Festival is starting in June is uh June fourteenth this year, Saturday. Um, it's the first of our big festival season and staff are really out in full force. Um, and I also have to compliment um the art, the community art that was integrated. Um, that beauty of adding, we have a local community band that is based in Thornton that was able to perform. Um, the Clerk's Office ran a beautiful wedding. It just was lovely. Um, it was a really joyous, albeit very hot day. Um, but water was plentifully available as was shade. And it's always the kickoff to a beautiful and long festival season here in Adams County. Coming up next is gonna be Stars and Stripes uh July third, which is always a good time again with the live music and community gatherings and probably the heat and the need of shade and water. Um, and then that follows into um a wonderful festival season. So if we had an opportunity to see you out, June fourteenth, that's great. Thank you so much for coming and celebrating with us and providing uh joy and respite and a celebration of our queer community members and their families. It was a really um beautiful day. Well done to the Parks and Rec team and all the volunteers um in our Health Department and our Clerk's Department and Sheriff's Department and everyone who joined in the participation. It was um, it's beautiful.
All right. I unfortunately missed all of the fun. I was out of town uh with, enjoying some family time. So, but I saw the pictures uh and so it looked like it was a really fun day. So looking forward to Stars and Stripes coming up. All right, no other comment. I'm gonna move forward with our consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Hold on, mine is not working. No, it's not working.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Henson?
Yes.
Commissioner Orecio? Commissioner Malika?
Yes. All right, now we move on to new business, County Manager.
Thank you Madam Chair. We have first item up um for new business, a resolution approving Amendment One between Adams County and M W Golden Constructors in the amount of five hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars for construction manager, general contractor services for the Justice Center Alternative Dispute Resolution Room Conversion to Courtrooms. And we should have Colin Sanders, Operations Manager, who will talk about that one.
Morning Commissioners, Colin Sanders. So um, this is the conversion of our A D R rooms, Alternative Dispute Resolution Rooms to Courtrooms. Um, the Adams County Justice Center Alternative Dispute Resolution Rooms was identified by the seventeenth Judicial District Administration to be underutilized and would be better served as additional courtrooms. After establishing the preferred design option, it was determined that hiring a construction manager, general contractor would provide the necessary support for the specialized project. Uh, the new courtrooms will match the aesthetics and function of the existing hearing rooms. The design phase has been completed. N W Golden Constructors has proposed a guaranteed maximum price of five hundred and ninety-two, three hundred and eighteen thousand to complete the project. Um, the original agreement for the G M P was five thousand. This amendment is for five hundred and ninety-two, three hundred and eighteen for a total of five hundred and ninety-seven, three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. The current um budget for the capital expenditure out of uh account nine zero five five was at seven hundred and seventy-nine, four hundred and twenty-six thousand. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions?
How many courtrooms are being constructed?
Uh, we're building out um two courtrooms, one on the fourth and the fifth floor.
Okay, two, okay, two, so two total. Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much. Uh, and I will welcome the motion.
Uh, I will move to approve the resolution approving Amendment One between Adams County and M W Golden Constructors in the amount of five hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars for construction manager, general contractor services for the Justice Center Alternative Dispute Resolution Room Conversion to Courtrooms. Amendment One, twenty twenty-five, two fifty-three.
And that motion passes. Four zero, or all four. Thanks. Um, next item.
All right, our second item is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Savio House in the revised amount of one million, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for E M D R, mental health services, intensive family therapy, substance abuse treatment, life skills, family time skills and sexual abuse treatment. And we have Katie McDougall presenting that item.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Katie McDougall, the Human Services Director. First, thank you so much for acknowledging uh the Adult Protective Services Team this morning. That was super special. Um, I'm here to present item number two, resolution approving agreement between Adams County and Savio House in the revised amount of one million, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a five-year contract period for E M D R, mental health services, intensive family therapy, substance abuse treatment, life skills, family time skills and sexual abuse uh treatment. The board had previously approved this item on April fifteenth in the amount of one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And due to a clerical error in the amount, we are back to request your approval of this new amount. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions from the board?
Just to clarify, so this is just a revision, it's not an additional.
Correct.
It's just go- changing the, the seven, two and eight.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions? All right, I welcome the motion.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, and that motion passes. Thank you so much Katie. All right, moving on to our county attorney.
No business today.
All right, great. And we have uh no land use hearings today. And so that is the end of our agenda. All right.
We're a jerk.
Yeah, that's it. Quick and easy. Thank you everybody for joining us today.
Good job Chair Malika. In formal competition, who wins the most efficient meetings? You can chalk this up.
There you go. I give credit. All right, thank you.